Item 10B, receive City Council Donation Subcommittee Report and provide direction to staff regarding donations for the Glenview Fire Area.
I'd be happy to give a very quick overview and then I'm sure that the two council members who compies the donation Subcommittee is appointed by Mayor Ruane are well-prepared to discuss this issue in more detail with the City Council. In very short summary, this afternoon, we distributed and we have on the counter to this meeting room tonight, a memorandum which outlines the recommendation that I believe the Subcommittee wishes to present to you tonight, that was worked through the Subcommittee after a couple of meetings by that group and then the conduct of a public meeting, which happened last Wednesday night on January 5th, for the purpose of discussing with the public and receiving public input about the process and the policy that should be utilized in a recommendation to the full City Council, related to the distribution of funds received by the city, and I say that deliberately "received" as opposed to solicited by the city. I would call to the Council and the public's attention the fact that the city was the recipient of a large number of donations, some very small, some very large, over the last several months since September 9th. We appreciate, as I believe the residents of our community appreciate, the generosity and the compassion that those donations represent and the desire of persons literally all over the world to assist in the community and the individual family recovery from this terrible and tragic event that has impacted San Bruno and the Glenview neighborhood in particular. As the memorandum points out, the city, regardless of how funds are received, has a fiduciary responsibility, both to the individuals and the organizations who provided the contributions, as well as to the community, to take a deliberative and responsible approach to evaluating how those funds should be utilized. As I mentioned, the mayor appointed a Subcommittee of the City Council and that Subcommittee has conducted a public meeting, which was very well-attended. I estimated at least 75 persons attended that meeting and participated very actively in a discussion that occurred over approximately in an hour-and-a-half timeframe. We recorded comments that were received in person on flip-charts and we've transcribed those and attached those to the memo you have in front of you. We also solicited, or rather, the Subcommittee solicited comments from attendees at the meeting that were submitted in writing. We have transcribed each of those comments as well and it goes on, as you see in your material in front of you, for several pages. I think that the input from the audience can be very simply summarized, and that is that the overwhelming majority of individuals attending this meeting and voicing their comments, supported a expedient distribution of the funds to the residents of the Glenview neighborhood, particularly those who have been most directly and devastatingly impacted by the explosion and the fire. The recommendation that the Subcommittee committed to producing for you tonight is in front of you, I'm going to stop in just a moment and allow the Subcommittee members to detail the, to provide the details of the recommendation in front of you tonight. I would just say that the City Council, as we have on several occasions informed the public generally, has the authority, among the five of you, to determine what is the process and the policy to be used in, to distribute or utilize these funds. The fact that you have a recommendation in front of you is essentially nothing more than a recommendation and the start for you to determine how you, as the entire City Council, wish to proceed. I can assure you that the Subcommittee has done a very deliberate and thorough job of evaluating both the community input and interests, as well as a variety of other issues associated with what is the right thing to do and how best to do it. Staff stands ready to accept your direction and we are prepared to move forward aggressively following your decision. We do not have a resolution on your agenda tonight to, that details a specific course of action, but we would ask your indulgence that we will come back so that at the next meeting with a resolution to clearly and concisely document the specifics of your action, primarily for the purposes of our record. You have the ability tonight to make a final decision, provide that direction to staff, or to take any action, that is your pleasure. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I think that your Subcommittee is prepared to provide you an overview of the details of the recommendation they've developed.
Subcommittee?
Mayor Ruane, I believe Irene and I would both like to share some, we both like to share some of our thoughts on the process and then go into the details of what we're proposing. In opening, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the members of the public that attended the meeting and those that have provided their input via email or phone calls, to let us know what they feel are the best uses of the money. I also wanted to offer my personal apology to anyone who feels that our delay in getting this out may have caused them undue hardship, it certainly wasn't our intent. I mentioned during that meeting that the purpose of the city, our mission, is to serve the public and that's certainly something that we try to do to the best of our ability and if we failed in that, I certainly am sorry for that. As the City Manager mentioned, the message that came through loud and clear was that there is a need for financial assistance in the area and we heard it a lot of different ways and certainly that is what Irene and I went back when we had our discussion, that was certainly our, our mission was to address that, that one issue. We acknowledge that it is our responsibility to do what we feel is the best solution for the city and even after getting all that input, our job, I don't think, was any easier. The recommendations were all over the map and we had to make some hard decisions, but I believe that the proposal that we're bringing here tonight is fair and is a very well-thought-out plan that will address a lot of the concerns that we heard that night.
Irene, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'd also like to thank everyone who participated and I particularly would like to thank the people who were in the minority. It's not easy to stand up in front of a group and say your opinion about something that you know may not be what the rest of the people are excited about. So, there's a little saying I keep telling myself because I sometimes am in that, it says, "Let me speak out even if my voice shakes." So, I hope we all remember that and I hope the people who are in the minority also are gracious enough to listen to the others. It was a vigorous and exciting, actually, discussion between the people who came to the meeting and then between Michael and myself afterwards. We even, even us came from two different sides and had to work our way to the middle to what we're bringing forward tonight. Before we go on though, and I know people are taking notes, so I want to make sure we add this, there's a provision in there about putting aside a certain amount of money. We would like to recommend to the Council that we make a commitment to have that money spent within the next six months. So, that should be added to the paper that you have in front of you. And, do you want to go to the particulars?
Sure. You can step through them.
Okay.
So, the recommendation that we're bringing tonight to the Council is that we establish three categories. The first category would include the 38 properties that were completely destroyed and demolished. The second category would include 17 properties which sustained moderate damage and finally 45 properties which sustained some minor damage. The formula we came up with would allocate $6,000 to the properties in the first category of demolished homes, $4,000 to the residents in the second category, and $1,000 to be distributed to the people in the final category. As Irene mentioned, there would be a fund set aside with the remainder of that, which is approximately equal to $58,000, which we then would commit to distribute via a process where we would solicit input to find the best use of those funds so that the remainder of the people in the neighborhood and anyone who was not specifically addressed in the first three categories would have access to some of that money. And as Irene mentioned, we would commit to making some resolution to the use of that fund within six months so that it doesn't get delayed any more than necessary. There's also a provision in the, in the staff report that includes an option to opt out if someone feels that they do not need the funds, then that money would come back and become part of the pool again.
Okay, so, the other pieces that we have down there, it's, we felt that if only residents resided in the property at the time of the fire, the renters should receive the monies. If the property owner resided in the property and also had renters, the property owner would be expected to share the dispersment with the renters and the dispersment would be limited time offer, so if you, everyone will be notified and then if you decide to opt out, if you don't need the money personally, again, as Michael said, it would go back into the fund and would be redispersed. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Iber or Mr. Medina?
Yes, please. First of all, it was a tough job.
That's an understatement.
Yes, I was, I was telling Councilmember Medina that I was very cautious in, when I was reading this and I was very pleasantly surprised that you did come up with a good, what appears to be a good formula. My first concern is that there's 38 properties, we know, that were destroyed as a result of the fire, but we also know that there are, we've approved three more homes to be demolished, so...
Those three homes are included in this 38. It was 35 and then the other three were added.
Was it 35 and 38?
Yeah.
I thought it was 38 plus 3.
No, it's 35 plus 3.
Okay, so as long as, yeah. And then it's just a matter of what is moderate and what's minor.
This...
And, and let me just, and does that incorporate everyone that, you know, is that a realistic number as far as what, who's been affected out there? I know there are residents that are still displaced and they may be displaced out of their home but may be classified as minor damage or something. There's been some confusion about yellow tag and that homes with yellow tags, have yellow tags, but then there are still homes that have green tags where families are displaced. So, just want to know if that's, you know, if we're very clear on how many families are being affected and if that number is reflected in this calculation.
Do you want me to? We understand the confusion. We had originally talked about the red tag, yellow tag, and light green tag, but that's, the definition of those have been shifted around a bit, but this is a total of 100 families and it reflects, as far as we know, everyone who has been affected to any degree. That was one of the reasons Michael and I struggled with putting aside money, because if we miss somebody who is more impacted than the former tags indicated, they would have some, you know, we would have resourced, recourse to some money so that they could petition to say whatever they need to say. You know, they need X amount more, or there was more people in their home, or their home was more damaged than anyone thought, or any of those kinds of things, so that's why we wanted to put some money aside.
Through the chair, I'm just going to ask a comment and a question because I want to hear from the residents that are here. First, I was asked by someone as to why I wasn't there on January 5th and just as a follow-up, a Subcommittee is two members of the Council, which precludes the other three from being there that evening. So, I just wanted that since somebody had asked me as to why I didn't show up that evening. The second thing was, there was some discussion early on and through the process of having some residents appointed also to the Subcommittee to review the process and come up with a recommendation. Was that something that was done, going to be, or is, that was one question that I did have before, I'd like to hear from the public.
Do you want to?
Well, in terms of what we're proposing tonight, we wanted to make sure we address the immediate need first and so that's what we're bringing here. We didn't go into detail in terms of how the remaining funds would be distributed, but I don't know if Irene agrees with me, but I think the idea there was that we would have a committee that included residents that would be responsible for making that determination.
That's, yes, I know originally we had thought of a Subcommittee, I mean, a Residence Advisory Committee, but I wanted, and Michael and I agreed, that we wanted to hear from the residents first before we set up an elaborate committee to do things that may not be necessary. So, since we heard loud and clear from the people that were at the meeting on the 5th, that it would be easiest to disperse the money and let them decide what to do with it, that that's what we decided. That's why our recommendation is structured the way it is. So, the set aside money, the 58,000-plus, we would be looking for input either from, form another, like a Subcommittee with advisory people and go from there. We haven't set that up yet, but as we said, we're committed to have it, either the money all spent or committed by the end of six months.
And I would assume the 58,000, if approved, would also enable the unique circumstances that maybe aren't outlined in here thoroughly and obviously there's a lot of situations that occurred that we're all learning about or may not fully know about and there's privacy of folks that are affected, so that would be something that could be utilized for those situations that arise that we haven't thought of or aren't black and white that are here.
Yes.
They fall in the gray area.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's one thing we struggled a great deal with.
Anything else? Well, first of all, I would like to thank everyone and as the City Manager said, people from around the world who donated to this, to this effort. This is truly incredible. To the residents for your input and your understanding and to the Subcommittee for doing a great job, a very, very tough job, because we know that not everyone's going to be happy with this, but that's just what we have to do. Not always happy with our decisions anyway. This is only one of many things we have had to contend with and will have to contend with going down the road. The issue for me, the distribution of the money, and I struggled over it myself, was do you base it on need or do you base it on impact? And we have all seen in the last four months plus, the needs change. Everybody has their own story, everybody. Everybody got over the initial shock fairly quick, but then you get down to the individuals and everybody has a different story. So, somebody might need the money, somebody might need it more than others, and others have told me, "That's fine, I'm just going to put it back in the kitty for others that might need it, I don't want it at all." So, I think they've made a very, the Subcommittee along with the residents have made a very good contribution to the way we're going to disperse these funds. I really appreciate your efforts on this and I think the only fair way to distribute the funds is based on the impact, which has to do with what you just said. Those that have been totally displaced, those that are partially displaced and some of those that have some damage but will be able to live in their homes now and get the damage repaired. So, and I do agree that a certain amount should be held back for extreme and extraordinary circumstances down the road that nobody knows about. Just a few weeks ago, we thought it was 35 homes, now it's 38 and we're hoping it's not going to be more. So, and I think that 58,000, in fact, with the backfill of people that are opting out and possibly with the funds from other nonprofits that have said, "Maybe we want to put, we'll see how you, the city's going to distribute the money, maybe we'll put our money in with yours and make it a bigger kitty down the road." That remains to be seen, but we'll have to address that as it goes and I'm happy to see that you're encouraged to get more input from the residents and probably start a small Subcommittee to, actually, these people are out there every day, their garage doors are open, people come up and they talk and I think that's a good thing to get back to the Subcommittee. So, I think you've done a great job and I agree with your recommendations. Anybody from the public, this is a very important item, would you like to speak to us about this?
Oh, come on, people.
Outstanding job.
It's a good job.
Thank you very, very much.
You guys are all doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we have the recommendation here and...
Do you want to make comments?
How about some action to the City Manager's...
Pardon?
Yeah.
Well, it's all, it's all well said and the thing is that on a smaller scale, in trying to distribute donations, we've got to meet some very extraordinary people and you're all very extraordinary. You've been through a lot in this last four months and you'd have to be in your position to really know what you've been through and I don't even claim to know, you know, what you've been through. And I just have to say that someone that didn't lose their home, their home is actually being repaired, but he's in a hospital getting a transplant. So, what more can happen to a family, you know, after this tragedy? But life goes on and I think 6,000 is not going to help any, you know, not help repair your home, but it's going to help something and that's all what we can do, 6, 5,000, whatever. You've lost everything, some of you and I, our hearts go out to you and we'll be there for you as time goes on. So, I just feel that this is a good step, it's not a lot of money, you've got, it's a nice step in helping the recovery and we're here to see that your lives do get repaired to some extent.
Did you have some? You need to go to the mic. It's okay.
I actually had a suggestion, as somebody who grew up in the neighborhood and has seen the severity of the area, why not start like a little fund for the people in the hospital that may have trouble paying their bill, medical bills or something like that? You know, you mentioned there would be something like 50,000 left over, that might be a good thing to put towards for the people like that.
And I think that's something that the Subcommittee and the residents will work on because as I said, there are other avenues for money also that are right around San Bruno. And just for the record, tell us your name and your street.
Sherry Sekulic and I live at 1460 Claremont.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And while the speaker comes up, I think, for those that are injured, it's also important, but also there are eight, eight lives that were lost in this, so maybe that gets taken in consideration too.
Good evening, my name's Roxanne Adamas and I've been assisting the Alvarado family throughout this process and one thing I'd like to point out is that language access has been an issue with some of the materials out there. I've been, I have staff that works with me and translates some materials to Spanish, but I'm assuming there may be other people out there with other language needs and I'd like to make sure to point that out, not only for this process, for them to understand, it's really critical to see it in writing. I can talk to them all I want, but I know the family wants to understand what these points may be, so if that's a possibility, I'd like to encourage that. And also just to be very careful and hoping to explain and express more in detail what those 58,000 would look, you know, what is an emergency need, how do we identify that? And I know the Subcommittee will do that, but I think it's critical to be able to have a really good outline and have the information out there, so that's my point.
All right.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much, two very good points and we will, we will in fact encourage that on our website very shortly. Those are things that are unforeseen and as I said, this is kind of a moving target, this whole thing, it's uncharted territory for us, so, right, very good, thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Kristy Brush and I have two comments I'd like to make. The first one is, I do understand that there are people who have had significant injuries or deaths who have not had major or even moderate property damage and I don't know that that's taken into consideration with this, but if some consideration is given to funds for people who have suffered medical injuries, not all of them will have the capacity to receive the funds, so perhaps consideration will be given to giving the funds to their representative, be it the personal representative, a conservator if one is appointed, or a guardian. That's all.
All right, thank you. And those are the kind of things we want to hear so we can, we can address them in the future. And if you have any specifics on that, Tammy Yuki is here, she's our HR Director and she kind of coordinates with the city and the neighborhood and you're welcome to talk to her after and give her any specifics, okay? Thank you. To the City Manager and the City Attorney, what is the fastest way that we can write a check?
Writing the check is the easy part.
Something they can cash.
Well, I...
So, we don't step all over ourselves.
That is still the easy part. There are a couple of, there are several logistical issues. First, since it appears as if the Council is prepared to accept this recommendation and I'm assuming that your desire will be that we move forward as quickly as possible, I'm prepared to tell you that we anticipate being able to distribute the funds by the end of next week. What I would suggest to you is that there are a number of items that we want to troubleshoot and make sure that we have adequately covered the residents with a explanatory letter to accompany the check, to confirm, for example, that the funds are given without any strings, if you will, you know, no specific expectations about what it's to be used for, that it's intended for disaster, to address the impacts of the disaster that have been experienced by the, by the residents. At this point, we're looking at a couple of different options about what would be the best way physically to distribute the monies. Obviously, we want to make sure that the person we're handing the check to is actually the right person, that that person has a, comment was duly noted about representatives who have an official relationship with a particular individual or family who's entitled to the funds, but we are currently evaluating at this point, our initial thought was to set up a process whereby people would be notified and asked to come to City Hall and to pick up the check and provide identification. Obviously, that will not work for everybody and so we want to make sure that we can make those arrangements with individuals for whom that is not possible. And I would say those logistic considerations aside, we're prepared to move ahead as quickly as possible. We can, we have the records that identify who are the property owners. We do anticipate that there are a variety of contingency situations that we may have to troubleshoot one-on-one with some of the affected parties, but we believe that we have accurate information that will allow us to at least make initial contact with the affected parties and to move through those issues expediently.
Okay. Mr. Medina?
I was just going to say also, I'm sure the Subcommittee not being there, but can only tell you that I'm sure it was a daunting task that you had, which to come together and try to form something to bring back to us this evening. And I also, again, as others have said, thank the residents. This is one thing that no one a year ago would have ever suspected or thought or even could have imagined could happen to this community or any community. And in a disaster and situation as such, I think truly it tests the leadership of a town, the ability of the staff, the courage of its residents, and the resolve of a community. And even... And even with all that happened in this defining moment for this city, I think we did extremely well. And I think we all can be proud of ourselves, we can be proud of this community and we can proud, be proud of San Bruno as our home. So I want to thank everybody here tonight, those that showed up January 5th and everyone who has supported and helped in any way they have throughout this whole crisis.
So I will entertain a motion to accept this subcommittee's recommendation and direct the city manager to expedite the process as soon as possible. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that your motion tonight, because the process we're going to employ tonight is to rely on your motion to implement as quickly as possible so that before your next meeting, we can actually be well underway in this process and then we're going to bring back the resolution that'll formalize what your motion was and incorporate the memorandum that you have tonight. So I just want to make sure that your motion tonight includes some of the changes you discussed, such as the six months and make sure that, and that there'll be a committee that will be formed to review it. That way we can incorporate those things in the resolution that you'll see next time, but we can make sure that we have, staff has the authority to move forward with your direction.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I, I think I heard you right, but, and I know there's going to be a formal resolution, but we're talking about trying to distribute money before we approve the formal resolution.
That's correct. That's what I, I want to make sure your motion gives us the direction to do that.
Okay.
So I then would like to introduce, or actually make a motion to accept the recommendation from the subcommittee with the proposed changes, including that we would give ourselves a six-month window to complete the process and that would be pending the formal proclamation at our following meeting.
Is the motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's okay.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, and just for a final, thanks to the hundreds of those who have donated to this cause. Individuals, businesses, organizations and everything, it's just, it's been a, it's been a wonderful thing and it's still coming in and hopefully there'll be more.
Thank you all very much. You're more than welcome to stay for our business.
Or not.